I'm going to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners meeting to order on March the 7th, 2023. Ask Commissioner Couch if she will.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this day and this time together to conduct the county's business. Please bless everyone in this room and their families. Please place a special hedge of protection around those who protect us. Be with us now as we make difficult decisions. Please give us the wisdom and guidance to make decisions in your will. In your most holy and precious name, I pray. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, the hands, nation, God, visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Let the record show we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the previous meeting, not March, February 21st. If you're packing, if you read them, then I'll accept the motion to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Johnson, we're adding one item to the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for your consideration, we're asking for the addition of item I-3A, which is Resolution Number 23-08.
Added. And we want to welcome everyone here, especially the, I think we have a youth leadership participant here. And if you'll just stand up, tell us your name and your school. Welcome. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Each item on this agenda has been through the necessary committee and received the necessary votes to be placed on the consent agenda. If it still meets with your approval, I'll accept the motion to approve.
Make motion to approve.
Okay.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. It is approved. Onto the debate agenda, I believe.
I do, yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2301, to amend the code of ordinance of Columbia County by adding a section 58-10 panhandling.
Second.
Johnson, you want to give us a quick update or reminder?
Yes, this is a second reading of the panhandling ordinance in Columbia County. This was raised and brought to our attention by the sheriff, asking that we make some adjustments to our ordinance to make this safer for our citizens and also those that may be soliciting funds. There are avenues in here that would allow groups like, charity groups like the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, that want to do business on private property to get permission from the property owner, anybody else that wanted to solicit on private property that could do that. But there are certain prohibitions in here. I think one of the ones that was really important was keeping people out of the road, soliciting funds, going to car windows and those sort of things. So I believe that's what this ordinance does.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Mr. Skinner.
Sir. First, we have file RZ 230108. I make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from RA to S1 for a portion of tax map 004002 for a proposed wireless telecommunications tower.
As Mr. Skinner just noted, this is for approval to zone a portion of this large property. It's a 132-acre property. They're looking to zone about a quarter of that acre, of that property, a quarter acre, to an S1 zoning to allow for a cell tower to be constructed. There is an accompanying variance request hearing next. Have to answer any questions you have.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
All right, sir. Next file VA 230104. Make a motion to approve the request for a variance for a portion of tax map 004002 to increase the height of the telecommunications tower to 260 feet, not to use a monopole tower.
Second.
As mentioned there, we do have ordinances that prevent a height exceeding 150 feet for cell towers. We also have a requirement that they are monopole. However, for this one to work effectively, they provide us with data showing heat maps. They provide us with collapse reports showing that if this were to fall, it would stay on the property this is associated with. The two variants they're asking for is to allow a non-monopole and to go to 260 feet. 250-foot a tower, 10-foot of lightning rod above that tower. There's room for multiple attachments to this tower. Here, that was the heat map that, if you go back one, that's the kind of heat, that's the coverage map. You can see a gap between the 150 that she's showing here, 260, if you go back to that one, you can see the difference in the coverage there.
And if I could add, the justification for this, in my opinion, as county manager, was well done. This is a good justification. We have seen some in the past where they did not go into this amount of detail and it makes it much more difficult to, to either, for us to recommend approval for the board, I think, to approve these. But this packet is well put together.
Mr. Sauter, excuse me for my ignorance. Can you explain the significance of monopole?
Yeah, so monopole, basically this is a three lattice structure versus a single pole like you would see. I'm trying to think of an example where there's one.
I know what you're talking about.
Like the Beasley Tower on Washington Road. You can see at Davis Road and Washington Road, it's just a straight monopole tower.
So usually we don't allow those.
We do. We require those.
We do require those. Oh, okay, okay.
In order for this one to reach the height, there needs to be a lattice structure, as you see here. Yeah, these are the very some of the ones we build.
Okay.
At a certain height, you have to go to the pipe, is that?
I'm not a tower engineer. They might have someone here that can explain that. Anybody here?
Evening. My name's Andy Rotenstrike. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Tillman and also AT&amp;T.
Do you state your address for the record too, sir?
420, 20th Street North in Birmingham. The answer is yes. We build monopoles up to about 200 feet tall. After 200 feet, this is the best structure for safety. This is a three-legged, it's actually, there's two of them right outside our door here. That's what it would look like and the height was needed, as Matt said, to accommodate other carriers. So we only build one structure in the area and to get that extra coverage to fill in that gap that AT&amp;T is trying to fill in. And this is all based on trying to get coverage in that area.
This is AT?
AT&amp;T will be the anchor tenant. So they'll be at the top spot and there'll be space underneath AT&amp;T's antennas for Verizon, T-Mobile, Dish.
So when it's built, will the additional occupants be on there or will they be added over time or how does that work? So if I have a Verizon.
Right.
And I'm sitting under it, that's not going to help me.
That's right.
All right.
Call Verizon, tell them you need coverage in the area. But that's the idea. Yes, it's available when they are ready to go on.
Put it on his bill.
Right, exactly.
But to elaborate on that, that is, that is a hole for all the carriers right now. Because if it weren't, then they would have been able to, AT&amp;T would have been, had the option to get on to another tower already there. But there isn't one. And the closest ones are three, three and a half miles.
That's right. And that's a very good point. AT&amp;T would much rather co-locate on an existing structure, but there just isn't one there. This will be that structure for everybody.
So if there's a need for another, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around.
If there's a need for another.
Other tower, and there's not one within three and a half miles?
Well, it, in this case, it makes sense for three and a half miles because of the lay of the land. But if there's a need for additional coverage in that area, whether it's capacity or actual physical coverage, you're going to have that additional space already on the tower, which you don't have now. So it's not to say that three miles from there, you may not need the coverage yet. So and there's other ways to hit that coverage or compensate for that.
You also told me earlier today that is the data speed or whatever.
Absolutely. That affects, that affects the footprint here. So, so if you want to take a second, if you, if you stay on this slide, so those numbers off to the side, when you start getting really into the green and greater, you're not going to have very good cell coverage at all. So you're really looking at the yellow and below. So that, that BSRP went really below 110 dBm. Those, and the dBm is, even though those numbers seem very close together, if there's a three dBm difference, that's actually doubling the power of your, of your transmit signal. So your receive signal is actually doubling. So even though the numbers look close, there's a significant difference. So the coverage that they show right there is good. And that was a gap if you go to the earlier slide. So in this case, you can see there's nothing there.
That's, that's as it sits here, sits here today.
And that's why I looked at it two and 260. When you start looking at other heights, 260 is actually the height you need to accomplish that. If you don't go to at least 260, you're going to have breaks in the north and the south.
And can we look at this slide that has the 150-foot tower? So there, there's.
Right. So I had the engineers at AT&amp;T put those rectangles to show you where the folks in those rectangles will not get the needed coverage.
Right.
They're on the fringes of that red and yellow.
It would get spotty in there, especially as you first.
How many households are affected if you go to the taller tower? Between 150?
I don't know of a number, but I would say that the, the increase in coverage is, is almost 50%.
There's an entire subdivision and then there was a church, Shiloh United Methodist, that will receive coverage with the 260-foot tower and not with the 150-foot tower. So I talked to several of those folks and they were in favor.
For their sale or? Data or you?
Um, they talked about cell, cell coverage.
But again, if they have Verizon or somebody else, it's not going to help them at all.
They're going to have to jump on there. And, and you do have the, they've got the additional arrays, arrays on a diagram for them to jump on to the tower. So I mean, they're going to have to do that because there, there's a gap. And if AT&amp;T has that gap, then I know, you know, the other ones probably do as well. So that's just a hole in the area right now.
And if they get the cell coverage, they can turn on their hotspot and then use that?
If they have cell coverage.
If they have cell coverage.
For a home Wi-Fi type scenario, yeah.
Right.
Do that. You know, the, the thing you have to remember too is a, these macro towers like this will, they generally support planning about 2,500 homes or residents, drivers. Depending on if it's 4G, 5G, whatever. 4G will handle about 30 call, 30 voice calls at the same time. That's with one array. So that's why it's important for these other, these other telecoms to come in because you start to triple, quadruple those numbers. But without that tower, they're not going to have any phone calls in that area right there. So the tower is needed.
If you don't get the additional height, you'll still build at least the 150, right?
I'm not so sure. Because is it getting the, what AT&amp;T needs? And they would need to then put in a second tower to fill that gap. So then this tower would then have to move, right? So that's, and the ordinance that you guys have in place, for all the right reasons, says, look, we want you to build the fewest towers possible. So when we went into this project, we went in with that in mind.
Have heard from any of the, other than the ones you've spoken with, have, have we heard from any neighbors that don't want it because it looks bad? We don't want to see it, it's too tall? Have you heard from any of them, Allison?
I talked to 12, 13 families and 12 of the 13 were in favor of it. The one, there was one kind of just neutral person that had adequate cell service, so.
There's no haters that are like, oh, we can't stand it, we don't want it. It's terrible.
Could have one speak at planning.
Yeah.
I talked to him, Mr. Campbell?
He didn't like it. Oh.
Yeah. He, he came to the planning commission. He, I don't know if he's here tonight. He, he hunts next door and he was concerned that it might affect the hunting. So I think.
Help his hunting app.
Well, only if they're used pictures. Or if the deer is using an app to locate the hunters.
Right, exactly. He are actually asking for this tower.
Were we able to answer?
Other questions?
Were we able to answer his questions and make him feel better about it?
Yes, we were.
There no, no known opposition?
And I spoke to him after the meeting and he seemed in, in good spirits afterwards.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Is a motion and approval on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Here we have file RZ 230203. I make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from R1 to S1 to contain existing residential units on the property located at tax map 074B, 002A, subject to the following conditions. Number one, requirements of 2018 Internal International Plumbing Code, section 607-3 shall be met. The paving and utility permitting and installation shall be complete within nine months of the rezoning approval.
Second.
This is a residential lot. As you can see, it has multiple buildings on this. You have two single-family residential structures. You have a duplex and a triplex. These were all built prior to the Columbia County zoning code being adopted. This came to light when they have a new buyer was getting his financing. Lending institution had concerns about this not meeting our current code. If they were to lose a, a structure in a fire, 75% damage, they would not be allowed to build back under the current zoning. So this allows these structures to remain. All the buffers will stay the same. Conditions are, we have to meet that plumbing code, the 2018 International Plumbing Code, and as well as getting the apron for the driveway paved in the next nine months.
What, Mr.?
Where the nine?
I think that was worked out between staff and the applicant.
Any other questions?
Basically gives them to the end of the year.
Motion, the second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Next file RZ 230204. Make a motion to approve the request for a conditional use for a tattoo parlor for property located at tax map 077C049, subject to the condition enumerated in the February 16th, 2023 Planning Commission Report.
Second. Already there?
Yes, so this is a conditional use. This, this business has been here, I'm sorry, I'm back up. Tattoo business, not name. The ability to have, receive a tattoo at this location has been there for quite a while. Current applicants own this previously. They sold out, I believe, in 13. The, the owners were up until very recently, so they're coming back. Between the time of the former owner and the new owner coming in place is when our conditional use for tattoo came about. So since you have a new business owner taking over an existing tattoo location, it still has to have a conditional use approved by the board. So it's there, but because of change of ownership, it triggers the requirement to have the conditional use approved. That make sense?
But he's all licensed.
Actually, they actually helped write our, our ordinance for tattoos, so well versed in what it says.
Right. I'm sorry, would you please approach? Please approach the stand and give your name and address and any political affiliations.
I don't believe we asked for public comment.
Deputy, arrest that man. We have a motion and second, I think. Uh, any more questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Moving on, file VA 230202. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance of section 90-147, use provisions for property located at tax map 066068A to remove the separation requirement from residential uses.
Second. The applicant here?
Hey.
Is that your name and address for the record?
I'm Broderick, I'm Broderick Godby. I live at 4764 Billy J Drive in Augusta, Georgia. I filed for a variance because with this particular property, you can't be within 50 of a residence to operate a car wash. 20 feet of that.
Aware of all of the requirements to run a car wash?
I run a car wash on Davis Road already.
You meet all the requirements at Davis Road? Have catching all your water and you are hauling off? Do you have any, if you happen to bring any of your manifest, were you hauling that off to us?
No, I didn't bring anything. Just a hand car wash.
Yeah, but we still have to keep and capture all that water because EPA does not allow that water to.
Yes, sir.
So that's happening on your location up there?
Yeah, we are, we're, we're following all the guidelines. We have mats to catch the water and everything.
You have the underground tanks and all the?
No, no, no. We're just a hand car wash and detail.
Oh, you don't have to catch the water coming off?
Yeah, but we don't do a drive-through. We don't do a automatic car wash.
The key, the key point is, in the new location, their new, since you've been open, there are new ordinances and there are new rules to follow. And some of them can be onerous. I'm just making sure that you understand them. Because last thing I want to do is approve it and then we come back here. And you're upset with us because you get shut down because you're violating EPA rules.
No, sir. We, we understand all the rules and we have all the material, catch the water, all that stuff.
You are having that hauled off now at your previous location?
We're on Davis Road. Not all, not at, not, not, we're not hauling water. And we've been there for eight years.
And?
Nobody never.
Then stop following the rules if you're not hauling water.
What I, what I, I'm licensed as a car wash over there. Not, I don't.
The key thing to me is to choose to understand that it's, they're different ordinances and it would.
I have everything to, to contain the water and haul it off. Yeah, we can haul it off. Anything we need to do, follow the guidelines. We're not trying to break any laws.
So y'all doing ceramic or just washing and waxing?
We, we're going to be doing ceramic coatings over here. We're just doing washing and waxing and detailing where I'm at. This is going to be for ceramic coatings and paint corrections and stuff.
All inside or outside?
All.
Washing and?
Have, we'll be doing inside and outside. It's a three-bay garage over here. We'll be doing some work inside, some work we'll be doing outside.
Washing, outside also?
Yeah, we have two container mats over there. I have one on the inside and one on the outside.
The variance, that back?
That back.
That back is the variance.
Code requires a separation of 50 feet from property lines of a residential property, which is this one here in the parcel in question. So currently he's at 32 feet per RGIS. Now, there could be some variances there, but it does not meet the 50-foot separation between a residence and their commercial lot.
Have the neighbors said anything?
I've not been aware of it.
Any other questions, comments?
I'm, I just want to fully aware of what all of the requirements are, how it needs to be handled and the waste and with it and can't be catching the drum. But that doesn't mean go behind this building and dump it to fill up this man's pond back behind him with.
Not at all.
I just don't want you to get in trouble.
Not at all.
There was someone who asked to speak before. I don't know if he filled out the form, but he did come up and, uh, so.
Yeah, the land.
Want to make sure before you vote?
The landowner.
Okay, just before you vote, he just.
Yes, I understand. No, not, y'all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn?
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Ming Lynn, 3519 Turnberry Lane, Martinez, Georgia. I'm representing the ownership and I like, I'm here to support the approval of the variance. And, uh, because of the history and the background of this parcel and the zoning, it's very vital and relevant to the question of variance. So I would like to brief the commissioners, the background so that aids to my quest that the commissioner consider approve the variance. The background is this. This land, we have obtained C2 zoning back in June 7th, 1989. We're talking about 33 years ago. And back, I mean, that zoning came, approval came with the privilege of entitled to all of the usage under C2 in the year of 1989. And the grandfather clause protects that. And any kind of variance, any kind of restriction added afterward, the grandfather clause prohibit that from applying to a zoning that.
I apologize for interrupting you, Mr. Lynn, but I think you're wrong.
That is, yeah.
That's incorrect. But that's okay. I'm just.
Okay. Well, that's my understanding, you know, from the law. Because without grandfather clause, everything can change. Then, you know, somebody's 1989 car, we have to go back to Detroit for refitting. And every time they get a new, new regulation, then it'll disqualify, it'll go back.
Well, can we stop for just a second and get clarification? What is the rule, Chris?
So if there was a use that was made in reliance on that law back then and that use continued, then yes, that use would be. I like the term grandfather, but grandfather.
It continues, it never stopped and changed.
That's right. But if you have just a, let's just say, an empty lot that was C2 and no one bought it in reliance on the uses of that time or, and didn't, you know, act on furtherance of it. And 30 years later, whatever the uses that are allowed on our C2, or I mean the allows, uses that are allowed on it, you can't go by what was allowed in 89.
It's by the current.
It's by the current allowed uses of C2.
But that's why it's so close already. Because it looks like there's not. You're talking about there's 32 feet. It looks like already less than.
Yeah, so if he was doing anything else in the C2 zoning, that variance wouldn't be applicable. It's just because of the car wash separating it from residential properties.
Car wash is.
Car wash only, because he's asking to now put a car wash, the variance is being required.
So what's there is okay, but the new car wash specifically, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
You know, to go back to what I was saying, if there was a car wash that was built in 89 and then we later added things saying, you know, there needs to be a 50-foot variance and it didn't meet it at the time, but it was allowed. And we couldn't go back and say, you know, tear down your building.
Okay. But is it considered a car wash since he's washing by hand?
Oh.
Yeah.
Another information is that in 2010, we already rented to a company named Rentalquip. And they already been performing car wash for three years. They washed all their tractors, all their equipments, all the times that they have rented that place. So that privilege has already been used and enacted. And this 50-feet distance did not place in until 2016. So that's six years after we already used it.
That could have potentially been in violation of zoning at the time.
They allowed to do that? Washing their own yellow paint.
I don't know. I haven't.
Nothing else.
Washing their own, that's not a commercial car wash.
Because you get washed your own car.
Actually, at that time, Rentalquip went through the county. County instructed them what they need to do. They built a collection basin on the side. They did everything what the county told them because the county did instruct them what needs to be done. So.
Saying that there is a basin and all on the property already for?
On the side, I'm not very familiar with which is which, but I know I was involved back then and.
He probably needs to know all of that if that's the case.
Yeah. Well, I, I saw, I saw something on the ground. It's looking like a square rectangle and which side are curves coming in. Now, my tenant back then was already telling me that the county made him to, you know, catch some water and they had to do something and they say they complied to it. So it, it's that. So i- is that the one? I'm not sure, but I know they meet the requirement of the county and they operating and washing all their equipment every day for three years. So that particular usage has already been used. And so therefore, we asked the board, you know, to uphold, uh, you know, the privileges of the C-two zoning and the grandfather clause. So, and we, uh, asked the commissioner would also, uh, uh, support a recommendation of the last hearing and, uh, approve the variance for this car wash.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
And we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was actually good information.
Yeah.
All right, there's a, any other questions? There's a motion in second on the floor. All in favor raise your right hand. All opposed, motion carries three to two.
Next, we have file VA two-three oh-two oh-three. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance of section ninety dash fifty-three, list of lot and structural requirements located at tax map zero-seven-seven, eight-nine-five, to reduce the front building setback from the Bird, Birdsong Way, right-of-way to a twenty feet from the property line for a proposed hole.
Second.
Please, will you go back one side? Here you have a, a view of the entire parcel. This was two parcels that had been combined to one, and you'll see there is a lot of, uh, a lot of unusable land as far as construction is concerned, so they are looking to push the house a little closer to the road in order to have the house built on the, on the high part of the property. It is a private road, not a county-owned road, so this is a private road they're asking to push closer to.
Have we heard from any neighbors of any...
No.
Thank you.
Questions? Motion in second on the floor. All in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. Mr. Malir, I believe, where to use?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three oh-eight.
Second.
Mr. Perrin, amend? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Uh, the name is... Uh, the name is Perrin, amend. Address is thirty-six forty-one Fox Fire Place, Martinez, Georgia, three oh nine oh seven. Good evening, commissioners. I rise in opposition to this resolution, to the change of the composition of the Board of Elections. I have two main topics of concern with this current resolution, and in the, in conclusion, I'll present an opportunity for the, for this body to move forward with what could be considered a potential model for the rest of the state. My first issue with this resolution is the lack of transparency. As you know, the last meeting, you pulled this item right before the start of the meeting. You added it to the agenda. Nobody knew about it being added to this agenda until last night. No party was informed, nobody. We happened to get a call from a commissioner saying that we're gonna add this. You guys put it on here last minute and you're gonna, you're ready to pass it without any community input or due diligence on our side. That's my first issue. The second issue, uh, is about a specific, the way you guys appoint the chair of the Board of Elections. Currently, as you know, it's a nonpartisan, uh, nonpartisan position. By taking this away from the current way it's appointed and giving the power to y'all, it gives you the potential for a partisan appointment to the Board of Elections. Now, you may not see this as an issue, but I'm gonna draw you a little picture. I want you to go back in time because hindsight is always twenty-twenty. Let's imagine it's twenty-twenty and this resolution has already passed this body right before the infamous twenty-twenty stolen election. For reference, I want you to keep in mind the current news regarding Fox News and defamation lawsuit with Dominion Voting System, who provides the equipment for this county. If you're paying attention to that, you'll know that back then, in twenty-twenty, they knew that the stolen election was a lie. They happened to sell it to a lot of people. A lot of people acted on those, on what they sold them. They were fearful of absentee drop boxes and a whole bunch of other stuff regarding absentee voting, which has been going on for, for a long time under Republican laws in this state. So keeping in mind that the election of twenty-twenty was fairly administered, I want you to imagine you're given a list of candidates from a local party. And on that list of candidates happens to be the MyPillow guy. If you follow local or follow national news, you know who he is. You know what he said about the election. Let's pretend that this Pillow guy is a Columbia County resident, so he qualifies for appointment to the, by this body to the Board of Elections. And without knowledge, you guys, you know, rubber stamp him, you put him on the Board of Elections. So let's go back between, time passes and another incident-free election is administered by our well-respected elections director. It's now the time of the post-election and pre-insurrection, if you will, also known before certification. Down at the local Board of Elections at their, at their meeting, they're presented with a list by a elected House member, a list that includes names, um, to challenge on their voter registrations. They come up with a list, you know, one thousand, two thousand people, says, we don't believe that they're legally registered to vote, let alone these people have voted for a long time. But the list is presented nonetheless to the board, who has to decide if they're gonna take action on that list. So let's say Mike, or Mr. Pillow is the chair of our Board of Elections. He gets this list given to him from a elected member of the Georgia House. And on there, he sees the list of people, says, you know, we could skim a couple votes here and there and it might change the outcome of a statewide election. And now, in his head, he's, he's getting what he's getting from Fox News and he thinks that all this bad stuff is going on without any evidence, and he's bought the lie, and he's in a position to act because you put him there to take action on this list presented to him. Something similar to this happened in twenty fifteen in Hancock County. Representative, uh, I forget his name. He's from Harlem, but, uh...
Fleming.
Fleming. He knows. He was the county attorney for Hancock when they got sued for trying to disenfranchise a bunch of voters from their, from the county rules, people that have lived there for decades. They were handed a list that says, hey, maybe this name is on our list. You need to check it out. They sent deputies around to make sure these people were there. The deputy's like, I know this guy. He's lived here for twenty years. His address is right. This list is bogus. But stuff like this can happen if you let it. So my question is, this opportunity that is presented in front of you. If you don't act on this resolution today, you have an opportunity to form a better resolution with transparency and due diligence. And you can either leave intact the current board the way it is or take advantage of this opportunity to get a better board that would work for the rest of the state. I know there's some counties that don't even have election boards, and in order to comply with the Supreme Court decision, they're gonna have to do something about that. So they're looking for reasons, and there's, if you look across the state, there's tons of ways that other counties, uh, populate these boards, whether through grand juries, through judges, or anything like that. So that's my simple statement, is what is the rush to comply with the Supreme Court's decision? Do you think this proposed resolution is something to be proud of? Have you considered the potential future consequences of appointing the wrong person to that position? Um, and that's my comment. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Again, I can speak for myself. Until I was made aware, we were, we were violating the Constitution. I frankly, I'm the one who pulled it off last time because I just wasn't convinced that we had enough information. But then outside of that, I was hit with, we have to be a public official, you have to be elected. Correct me if I'm wrong, you have to be elected to appoint a public board that affects the mission. Is that right? Am I saying it the right way?
Can't have a private party pick.
That's correct. Can't have a private party.
Right, and so the way we set it up, we went back through it, was that the parties will be selecting candidates and will choose one of those candidates. That's what it says. One will be chosen, so the parties have to. And then the Board of Commissioners will come up with the chairman, who is a independent person. So now, that's incumbent upon us. I can, Perrin, I'd be glad to talk to you about my Pillow guy after, Pillow guy after this because I have my own issues, but that's a separate subject. I've already disproven a lot of the data myself. But that said, an elected person has to approve, and this is the best way we know how to do it.
Chairman, if I can add, if, if I could add just to the conversation here, what you have before you is a resolution that is requesting the local delegation to, uh, do local legislation to change the composition of the Board of Elections, the way we're asking them to do this. The delegation is not compelled by law to accept this resolution. Now, I have no reason to believe that they will not do that, but I think it's important for everybody to understand that should the delegation decide that they want to drop legislation, uh, on this matter on their own without any guidance from this board or any guidance from this community, it's certainly within their right to do that. So we, we have been in contact with them. We have forwarded this, uh, to our local delegation. I, I, I do believe that they are, uh, okay with the language that the board is asking for. Should the board pass this, I believe that they would go forward with that. But should this board send that delegation something that they're not interested in passing, it's just important for you all to know that they could change it any way they so choose. And they could make it any way they so choose with or without this resolution.
There's nothing saying we can't reappoint the three people who are on there now. Unless the parties appoint the people.
That is correct. If, if, if the current is correct. If, if the, if the parties submitted the names of the people that were currently there, then it is absolutely possible that the exact board that is in place today could remain in place should this body decide so.
I'd like to add what Chairman Duncan said. I too was very concerned about the way it looked, having us choose. I kind of fought against it and we had a lot of discussions about why, why, why do I want, why would I want to give myself that, that choice to put somebody on the Board of Elections that I'm on the ballot? And, um, the, the, um, folks on our delegation made it clear that this, uh, delay versus Sutton decision is very much applicable to our situation here. And if we don't do something about it, the delegation will do something for us. And we would rather have that decision of how this is set up, made on this local level with our control rather than having somebody in Atlanta tell us how it's going to be. And, and by giving the parties, um, choices, I, I feel like this is a... I would rather have not done anything, but it is imperative that we do something, and I feel like this is a good, good compromise.
Need to be on the record. Otherwise, it'll be decided for us.
It will be decided for us.
Any other questions? There's a motion in second on the floor. All in favor raise your right hand. Carries. Onto the... Executive, well, legal matters, sorry, I didn't...
No legal matters.
No request for review by committee, but Trey is here. Public comments, additional public comments. Executive session, I know we have one, two, three, four items that we can deal with right here and now. Vice Chairman?
You ready, sir?
Please.
I make a motion to approve eight thousand dollars to James and Matt Atkins. For seven one zero zero fourteen, thousand nine hundred dollars to Chris. I just... I've seen. Thousand dollars to Cheryl. Junior. I be, right-of-way or easement, Party McManus.
Second.
Matt?
We got about forty-one more of these to go, but we're moving forward.
Pick up your pace now. Motion in second on the floor. All in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve two thousand dollars to parcel number zero. Five thousand dollars to parcel number two zero two. Dollars. Tal, Talum's, Tomlessen, parcel number zero zero three, five thousand sixty dollars to Louis. Kurt Hane. One thousand five hundred dollars to Paul and Cherry, parcel number zero. Right-of-way and or...
Second.
This is your first action on our Hurtform Road project. This is a blended project. It's House Bill one seventy money as well as Tia two money. So we are making advances. We only have two hundred and sixty more of these to go.
You really gotta pick up your pace. There's a motion in the second on the floor. All in favor raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve five hundred dollars to Martin. parcel number nine zero zero six B, permanent and temporary.
Second.
This is our force main. This is the one out of Harlem, correct?
One coming from White Oak.
Yeah, yeah, so this is our force main from White Oak, the industrial par over to our main plant, so start on this one now.
Make a motion to accept a donation during company parcel. Permanent and temporary. Right-of-way.
Second.
So we've, we've, y'all voted to abandon part of the right-of-way on Deer, so we actually are in the process of going through that. This will allow us to put a drain line for our elevated tank, which is east of John Deer Parkway, drain it through John Deer property to get down to the wetlands, so prevent us from washing out of the people's property if we have to drain that tank for maintenance, painting inside of it, cleaning it out, that type of thing.
Make a motion to approve a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Andy. Oh eight two. Property adjacent.
Second.
So this, uh, our, our interest to the water plant over there is, is up a hill. We have all of our water lines coming from the river leading up that. If we ever have to dig that road up to make repairs to those water lines, we lose all access to our plant. Uh, we're also, uh, always adding to that plant. Our UV system's going in. Buying this property will allow us to have a secondary access into that plant. This, this property is kind of in disrepair, so, um, we're able to get it for such a good deal on, on price, but we'll have to tear a house down and, and get that access point through there.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Raise your right hand.